Okay, ladies and gentlemen, can we stand for the pledge? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. We're going to move forward with public participation. So Marie Blake.
You got it, Joe?
Oh, thank you.
Hi, Marie Blake. 359 Wheeler Road. Excuse me. This past week, I spent a lot of time reading. I read Monroe's Town Charter and discovered Monroe has a Board of Ethics. I found that pretty interesting. And I read a school governance position statement published by CAPE, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, and CAPS, the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents. This last article is great as it outlines the specific roles of the Board of Education and the superintendent. For sake of time, the fifth bullet point read as follows, and I quote, "The Board of Education's responsibility is to refer communications such as questions, complaints, and personnel inquiries to the superintendent as appropriate and to encourage adherence to the established chain of command. The superintendent of schools' responsibility is to respond to communications as appropriate and ensure the adherence and appropriate response through the chain of command and to keep board members informed about district issues in a timely manner." I also read an article entitled, "So You Want to Be a Board Member," published by CAPE. This article has a section called CAPE Code of Ethics for Boards of Education. One bullet that pertains to my comments tonight is, and I quote, "I," obviously the Board of Ed member, "will refer all complaints through the proper chain of command within the system and will act on such complaints in public meetings only when administrative solutions fail." So I wonder who was given complaint. If it was given to the Board, you, Mr. Chair, should have turned it over to the superintendent. If it was given to Mr. Cobbza, he should have informed you, and he should have ensured the adherence and appropriate response. If Mr. Cobbza was removed from this process, then it should have gone to Mrs. Cassinelli, the Assistant Superintendent. Another big question mark exists. Why did the Board act on this complaint and so aggressively? Let's not forget, you chose to disregard DCF and the Monroe Police Department's investigations. Let's not forget, the decision to hire outside counsel just happened after a discussion, right? Isn't that how it happened? Let's not forget, you are spending taxpayer money on this investigation. Let's not forget that you and the Board, you, the Board, have not been forthcoming with any information. I know confidentiality. Really? Since when is the way the Board chooses to spend taxpayer money confidential? Since we don't get answers from you, we are left to do our own research and draw our own conclusions. So next, I'll be researching conflict of interest and recusal. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek Conti. Hi, state your name and address for the record. Go ahead.
Derek Conti, 78 Lantern Drive. In light of the meeting tomorrow, I'll temper my comments. So after your guys' hopeful decision tomorrow, I'd like to take a minute to thank Coach Sal for the years he's dedicated to this program and the impact he's had on my stepson. He will be missed. Make no mistake, the blame for the loss of Coach Sal is squarely on the shoulders of the Board. The length that this investigation is taking is absurd. It's, I can't put words to it. The Board of Ed, the police, the DCF have all been weaponized against Christie and G for past personal vendettas. I'd like to ask any of the Board members if they believe this investigation has gone too far on a length of time. No? What about you?
Sir, it's a comment only.
Comment only? Okay. That's funny. You guys responded last week. You guys just making this up as you go along?
Continue.
This investigation was supposedly being conducted with these kids in mind. However, if that were true, the investigation would have been concluded by now. You are causing irreparable damage to the program and more importantly, to these kids, the same kids that you are supposed to be protecting. Our community is suffering from a lack of leadership, lack of leadership from this Board and clearly in certain homes. When my kid comes home and they say they got in trouble, I ask, what did you do to my kids, not what did the person who in authority is wrong for reprimanding them? We do not hold our kids accountable. And I hope at the end of the day, everybody who had a role in this sham investigation is held accountable. Every single one of you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public participation? Anyone else like to speak? Okay, we're going to move forward. Thank you very much with the report of the Chair. I do not have a report. We're going to move forward with the consent agenda. Is there any questions on the approval of minutes?
Yeah, I noticed one error on the minutes. It had Justin voting even though he wasn't here and Chrissy not voting, but she was here, so.
That's not this. Oh, yeah, that is this one for October 2nd.
Yeah, for October 2nd.
So that's going to go back to correction.
That's going to go back. Yep, that was it.
Okay. Any questions on the warrants for Ron or Joe?
Nope.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the warrants and we'll get the minutes corrected? Okay, so approval on the warrants. Dennis, a second. Chrissy, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you very much. We're going to move forward with the reports of the committees and we'll start with our student reps. Go ahead.
Good evening, Monroe Board of Education. I hope you're having a marvelous Monday. Spirit Week began with a bang today. Students excitedly wore their pajamas and brought anything but a backpack. Students were seen with shopping carts, laundry baskets, bicycles, inflatable rafts, and many more fun objects. Tomorrow, Spirit Week continues strong with Barbenheimer Day. Students will dress up in either support of the movie Barbie or the movie Oppenheimer. Wednesday, we celebrate Color Day. Students will wear color-coordinated outfits with their grades. Later, the annual Massey Bonfire will continue the fun from 5:30 to 8:30. Thursday is our school's theme day. Each student will wear clothes in line with their grade's chosen theme. Friday is Wear Red and White Day in preparation for our exciting homecoming football game versus Pomperog. Finally, Saturday, October 21st, we will celebrate our homecoming dance in the Massey Gym from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m.
This past week was a big one for the class of 2025 as we took the PSAT and MSQT on our computers on Wednesday, October 11th. The two-section four-module format was new for students, Massey faculty, and the College Board, so there were unfortunately some tech issues that came up not just at Massey but actually nationwide. Thankfully, all Massey students were able to complete the test on Wednesday. Reception was mixed across the junior class, but the hope is that the new format proves to be more relevant and accessible for all students. Taking the digital PSAT gave juniors an idea of what to expect on the digital SAT, which will be taken in March 2024. Among all of the other exciting things going on this month, the World Languages Department is hosting its second Latin night in a while on Tuesday, October 24th, here at Massey. They're excited to bring a live band and DJ and flavorful Latin cuisine to the school with a special guest, Orquesta Afinkay. Tickets are $15 for students and $20 for adults, so make sure to come out and support. And of course, our sports resort report, sorry. Football won against Joel Barlow at our Think Pink home game on Friday. Boys soccer and girls soccer won against Bunell, and girls volleyball won against New Milford.
Thank you. Thank you. I saw some dirt bikes getting wheeled in, baby carriage, and so I'm sure it was fun. Yep, yep, thank you. Do any Board members have reports?
CES, this meeting coming up, CES report. Basically, you're invited or we're invited to have a meeting update on RCA 6 to 6 program on November 2nd, 2:00 p.m. and then represent councils at 3:00 afterwards. On the normal report, they were talking about a lot of building changes that they want to do and they upgrade for their buildings, but you know, nothing more than that at this point.
Okay. Any other reports? Okay, we had a safety committee meeting on the 5th. Schools reported in that their drills have been going well. Sheila gave us an update on the reunification part of the crisis drill, and that's after emergency, where you know, family and kids get back together. And also, an access card audit was done and will be done annually now, Sheila. So some interesting things came up with that, and some things got corrected. There were some duplicates, so it was a good exercise to go through and just makes it all better. So thank you for doing that. That's all I have with that. So we will move to the report of the superintendent. Joe?
Sure thing. We'll start with the fund activity statement. If, Ron, if you want to go through it or if anyone has any general questions for Ron?
So the only thing I wanted to point out on page-
Everybody looks at Dennis.
Go ahead.
I don't know how we read these things.
On page 40, again, tuition public is, has a large deficit. The majority of that's due to the excess cost grants that we receive. Other than that, we're still early. The only thing I'm concerned about, it's running a little hot, is athletic transportation and utilizing a lot of the charter buses.
Yeah, okay.
Trying to use a lot of third-party buses rather than All-Star just for lack of employees and lack of drivers.
We did have some contingency built into the budget for that, so we'll be keeping that.
Okay. Any questions for Joe or Ron?
No.
Keep it on, y'all.
There's a link there for everybody. I know at the last meeting, we talked about the 24, 25 budget liaisons. So what we did, I know Dennis recommended it at the last meeting, that we switch up what we've done in the past, so that link has what you've done over the past three years. So I think it's been three years that we've done it. So review that. I have a Google Doc for everybody. I'm going to email that out tomorrow morning, and then people can just sign up for the particular departments that they want to sign up for.
Joe, I just boiled up as a suggestion. I don't know how everybody else feels. You know, I mean, if you're doing it year after year, you kind of get immune to that area. You guys feel like we should switch up or?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I think it would be good that all of us take a different department every year so that after so many years, we get it. We get the whole district. We understand.
For ease of simplicity, can we just rotate it once, one school? You know, move it one slot, just move us all down, move to the right, just then you'll have it done. Does that work?
Possibly. Let's, people want to just see how the signups go?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Otherwise, we can-
Okay, meet it next time.
Do something like that. Yeah, yeah. I know we've all learned a lot by sitting down with the department chairs, and we've been able to come back with much more support for the budget because we get it. So I think it's been a good exercise the last few years that we've done it. I know it's made me more aware of the issues hands-on, so.
And the last piece, I just wanted to keep everyone, you know, in the loop on this. So with the Board of Finance's approval, we're moving ahead with the press box and video screen project here at Massey. Funds have been approved to purchase the press box, to perform the site work, to install the press box and video screen, and run cable and electricity from the press box to the video screen. The second part of the project was actually the purchase of the video screen itself, which would be located right adjacent to where the scoreboard is now. We've talked about this in the past. We remain committed to raising the funds for the video screen separately, not using Board of Ed funds. Newtown has a similar setup, and we're engaging with the same company that they use to help raise funds for that through sponsorships. Name of the company is Powerad. While this isn't a contract that would require the Board's approval since they're helping us raise funds, it's not like we're engaging in, you know, having to lay out money for this. I just wanted to keep the Board informed about it. So, you know, basically, Powerad will work with us, with the high school administration, to identify and target different possible sponsors at different levels. You know, they have like Title Diamond, those kinds of things, to cover the cost of the video screen itself. Worst-case scenario is they don't, they don't come up with enough money to, you know, through sponsorships, then we would have a choice to either pay the difference of the video screen, which I would not be in favor of, or receive installation of the equipment without the video screen and then continue to fundraise for the video screen afterward. You know, one of my concerns was allowing a company to advertise that might not align with our core values, you know, a vape shop or something like that. So one of the things I did request in the agreement was that, that the administration, you know, Steve and myself, would have the kind of the first right of refusal for any potential sponsors.
That makes sense.
There's, you know, once we're engaged in this, there are some recognition responsibilities that the school would have to participate in. You know, for example, a sponsorship night at a, at a home game or, you know, maybe at a game each season or something like that, where we thank those companies who donated money. I think it's a pretty small price to pay for, you know, for getting the project done. So again, I just wanted to keep everyone informed. We want to get that moving now. We met Steve, myself, Ron, met with the folks from the companies to look at moving the press box and installing the video screen. We have some lead time by starting it now. We want to try to get that thing moving. And, you know, one of the next pieces is having, you know, having this agreement in place to raise the funds for the, for the video screen.
Okay, good.
Do you have a projected start date?
We, did we come up with one? So we've had-
Well, ideally, the press box would be in for the spring season, and then we would look to install a screen right after graduation so that by end of July, it's in and ready to go. So we have a month before any of our fall seasons start.
Just one question. Who's the project team? Is there a project team? Or is it just you two guys?
Oh, it's just you, Dennis.
Thanks for the-
Oh, did I make that shift?
Dan's been on-
I'm taking a shift to the left now, not the right.
Yeah, Dan, I failed to say Dan, yeah.
I was involved.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a T.
Yeah. IT and Dan, yeah, Dan's been-
Dan's been on Ever Source, right, still, with an answer for the power, getting the power down there and all that?
Yes.
That's the biggie.
Yep.
They have to be clear on the advertising. It's not, that's not our responsibility. That will be them with parameters set by us.
Exactly, yeah. We, like I said, we would have first right of refusal for anything. They would look to us to, you know, possibly identify, you know, certain key, you know, key groups that, you know, might want to advertise with us, so.
Any other questions for Joe? Okay, we'll move on. Number eight, unfinished business. We have an approval of the field trip to Italy in the spring of 2025. May I have a motion to approve the spring 2025 trip to Italy as presented to the Board at our last meeting? Alan, second. Dennis, any discussion?
All controlled by the State Department.
Huh? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we don't know what's going to happen a year from now, but obviously, I think it's great, you know, with the couple of different trips that have been proposed to us, and it's an opportunity for students to get over there, so I think it's great. Yes, Alan?
Joe, how many chaperones would be?
One to six.
One to six?
Yeah. Yeah, it would be a one to six ratio for chaperones. And one of the things that we talked about in terms of the State Department and whatnot was, you know, using that, I forget what the name of the insurance policy, but it was like basically, you know, cover anything kind of a policy that would, that would, you know, if we got into an unfortunate situation where we had to cancel the trip, that they would, the families would be reimbursed, up to, I think it's like 75%.
It was 75. She was going to look and see if it get 100%.
Yeah. Sorry.
It might cost a little more, but it'd be worth it to go to 100%.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to move forward to new business policies, first review. Christine, you want to tell us about these two?
So we had two policies to review. The first was for special ed, we would, the new rule through the state was that you would end on the 22nd birthday, but now the new, they changed it so that its services are up until their 26th, they are until they graduate from high school, whichever turns first. So if you turn 22 in, say, October, you would finish that school year. So that's the change for that policy. Any questions on that one? Pretty standard. And then the second policy was for the AP courses, it's allowing equal access to AP courses. We already do this in the Monroe school, so this isn't really a change to policy. It's just putting in a policy that we already do. It's just allowing override. I guess some districts in other towns don't allow a parent or, you know, a student to ask for an override into an AP course, but in Monroe, we do allow overrides. So this is just a policy allowing that, which is what we're currently doing anyway, so.
But it's required by CAPE that we have this, all districts have this policy to allow equal access.
Yep.
But it's already our practice, so we're just putting our practice in.
That's great.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Dennis.
No, I'll take it offline. Thanks.
Okay, so these will come up for a vote next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions on those? Okay, moving forward, curriculum first review. We have a new course coming up?
Yes, we do. Janelle just said he's here with Mike Valley. Janelle's going to, I know Mike's going to talk a little bit about-
Curriculum Council and a new program in Advanced Late Smith Micro.
So good timing. Thank you for that policy coming right before. So it's that time of year where we're starting to present new courses, some new materials. We try to get these in before we do our budget planning, obviously, because there is a cost that goes along with this. I'm not going to talk for long, but Janelle is introducing our first new course that is being proposed to be included in this next year's program studies here at Massey High School, AP Micro.
Good evening, everybody. I am here to introduce a course proposal for AP Microeconomics at Massey High School as a brand-new course for next year. And there have been a lot of people who have been working on this this year, especially myself, Rochelle Crino, and Allison Danzo. We are business teachers here at Massey High School. We did start putting this together last year, and we did present in front of the Curriculum Council a little about a week ago. And so now we're presenting to you, and we're looking to put this into our program of studies in December so that students can sign up for it this winter for next year. The reason why, there's a lot of reasons why we want to propose this course. Number one, I would have to say, even though it's not first on that list, is the growing number of students at Massey who have asked for this specific course. They've come to us and said, can we have an AP Economics course of some kind? And so we've been thinking about this for a while and trying to put it, bring this to fruition. And some of our students have actually attempted to take the AP test in microeconomics or macroeconomics on their own with differing levels of success, but they've all come back and said it's extremely difficult to do on their own. For a lot of them, it was just not doable. So they really are looking for this course. Financial and economic literacy, as you know, is something that's in the forefront of the news and with the new state curriculum that's going to be coming out for personal finance, but economic literacy is just as important. It's a little bit different, but just as important. And so most of the other schools in our Derg as well as Derg A, both A and B, offer the course, and so I wanted to bring this to you as well. So these are schools that currently already offer either AP Microeconomics and/or macroeconomics. Right now, we're proposing AP Microeconomics. We are thinking of proposing macroeconomics for the following year. As you can see, we're in good company. All these schools are offering the courses. The scope and sequence that we have here is the same that is put out by the College Board, so we would be following that same scope and sequence. And these are all microeconomic topics. And the great thing about this course is it fits in and serves very well our vision of the graduate in every area. As far as critical thinking and problem solving, that's what microeconomics is all about. We have a lot of analytical thinking. There's a lot of evaluating economic situations and making predictions, solving complex economic problems, how to make choices about allocating resources. It's all about problem solving and critical thinking. Communication is also essential for AP Microeconomics. A part of the tests that they have to take is, includes free response questions where they have to communicate. They not only have to solve the problem, but they have to communicate how they solved it and why that's the best answer. They have to be able to create graphs and read graphs. And that's a huge part of communicating how they solve the problem and why their answer is the best answer. So communication is essential. I think one of the best things about microeconomics is it also, it's so related to so many other areas that I think it really sparks a lot of interest in a lot of different areas beyond economics, because all the problems that it touches on are related to a lot of different areas. And I think the great thing about it is these decision-making skills and these ways of thinking can be applied to any situation. As far as empathy and compassion, especially weighing the benefits and costs to all parties is a super important part about economics. It's not just what I think or what you think. There's no bias. We remove the bias, and how do you solve a problem so that all parties are best served? And social emotional awareness, same kinds of things, all respecting other people's perspectives, seeking to understand other people's perspectives, definitely is part of economics. Short and long-term goal setting for the entire course, because it is very rigorous, will help them manage their own social emotional readiness for tackling the course. It can be overwhelming when you look at it right from the very beginning, but that's one thing that we have built into the course. And so I looked into the cost. This is for the textbook, I'm, okay, it's going around, okay.
Yep.
The McConnell by McGraw-Hill. And we're looking to get 30 student bundles. It's online, it's a textbook as well as online resources. They used to have a workbook, but the online resources has kind of enveloped that, as well as the teacher online version and some just whiteboard kind of assisting kind of technology, hands-on kind of technology. That's what we're looking at. Now, that's for the 2021 edition. I have been in contact with McGraw-Hill because every three years, they seem to be updating the text, but they haven't actually come out with the 2024 yet. So we'd like to get the 2024 if at all possible, but I don't have any numbers on that yet. So these are the numbers.
You're not even sure they're actually-
We're not even sure.
They don't even know if they're publishing it.
We don't even know that for sure yet, so.
But would be probably somewhere closer to-
Probably. Yeah, we don't know if it's, that's right, so.
Add 10%?
Add 10%.
Right.
And that's it. Does anybody have any questions? Yes?
I saw briefly the chapters, the syllabus in the book, but-
Yeah.
How's this integrated with your personal finance training? Is it going to be incorporated in it, similar to the crash course we do with Rotary, I mean?
Yeah, oh, that's awesome. It's actually very separate. So in my second year, second year finance class, we do a little economics unit. It is different. There's really no personal finance in this, yes. Even though it's really, microeconomics is really about individual decision-making and business decision-making.
Right.
It's not the personal finance that we do in the personal finance course. It definitely helps to take it before, but it's not required.
Gotcha. Thank you.
In that book, which is important, it would be the book for macro also.
Yes. The great thing, yes, another great thing about that text is that it has sections for micro as well as macro. So when we propose that course in the future, we could use the books for both. They could definitely switch depending on enrollment.
Janelle, I apologize because I wasn't at Curriculum Council last week, but this is, oh, it's right there. Pages 11 and 12.
Yes.
Trying to make sure that it goes clear.
Like, within budget, because you said you wanted to start this one. Yeah, I see Sheila.
Yep.
That's good. Nice.
Then you'll run just one section? Is that the 30? Are you right?
Yes, just one, one section.
And then you'll propose macro for the following year?
Yes.
Okay.
That's our, that's our goal.
Yeah.
To have both like the other systems.
Yeah.
You talked to Curriculum Council about doing schools that have done a half-year of one and a half-year of the other and how does that work for kids? I don't know if you want to share that with the board?
Yes, so we're proposing a full-year course. And the reason is because I have talked with numerous teachers who have tried it in the half-year course, have done it, and they say it's extremely difficult, especially for the students, because if they do it in the fall, for them to come back and take the test in the spring, because the test is only offered in the spring, is extremely difficult. And it's a lot more work on the students, it's a lot more work on the teachers as well to get those students back up to speed. They don't get any time to do any projects, it's just boom, 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 there's no time for projects or any of the fun stuff about learning economics. And I was told time and time again, if you can get the full year, go for the full year because that's where the students really get to maximize the potential out of the course.
Any other questions? This will also be on our agenda for next meeting? For vote, no?
Oh, yeah, one.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Take it ahead, as complex as it is to get into the business course, the division is same type of weight for this course for, from a degree. So a year from now, we're gonna have to add some more resources rather rapidly. Business course is hard to get to and you leave it for the seniors so they make sure they have it. You anticipate the same type of demand for this course?
You mean personal finance versus this as far as?
Both, you know, they take both, right?
I don't think this would count as the personal finance requirement for the state.
Okay.
It's very different.
It's also just the AP, I think, when you're talking about the AP level though, we do have, you know, it's limited. I mean, I'll be honest, it's limited with 11th and 12th graders, because you, many of you have kids who went through that process and they have a certain amount of time a day and they're gonna start to specialize a little bit more. And there's kids going into business school that are really looking for the AP course, but I think, you know, I think a section is a reasonable expectation at this point. And we would love that, you know, and for you all to say, ah, hire three more business teachers.
That's what I think that's. I think that's the essence of Dennis's question is with this. And I think the question then goes back to Steve and the high school staff and the administration to look at. Listen, there's only so many teachers, there's only so many sections, so if, you know, if we have to make decisions, if depending on what enrollment looks like, yeah, maybe we run two sections of micro in two years, but that might mean that we run one less section of something else in a business fire, depending on, depending on course enrollment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Janelle.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Stevens? Oh, stand by, Ron?
Did I just mention there's a town meeting Monday?
Yes.
And one of the projects is a.
Schools.
What time is that meeting?
Before the town council meeting.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock on Monday, there's a town meeting.
I'll send it as, I'll send it with my weekend review as well.
Yes, there are school projects on there, so we would hope that the community comes out and votes in favor of that, so. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Jerry, second. Christine, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, good night, everybody.